Thanks for joining us for the committee meeting of the whole Monday, September the 29th. Twenty twenty five, it's five thirty P M and I'll call the meeting to order. Had an opportunity to review the agenda, the single item for discussion. Of the few motions that we need for this evening. Pastor Golicson.
Thank you. I'll move the agenda as presented.
Thank you very much. And before we move into that item, I'm just going to go through our next meetings. Another committee of the whole meeting here in chambers at five thirty P M on Monday, October the sixth. And then Tuesday, October the fourteenth, we have our. Final meeting of this term, a regular council meeting, same time and place. Director Thompson. The floor is yours.
Thanks, Mayor Creasy.
One motion and I missed it. All those in favor. Are we doing it? Were we doing the things? Mine doesn't come up on mine yet. Maybe if I'd be quiet for there we go. Please go ahead and vote. Make for a really short evening if we chose not to pass this item, so. That's unanimously in favor. Director Thompson, the floor is yours.
Thanks, Mayor Creasy. In August this year, council directed administration to bring forward a discussion on heavy truck traffic along 50th Avenue. Specifically, the downtown section between Seanie Trail and Hobby two A. Our aim this evening is not to present recommendations, but rather to pose potential topics. Council would like administration to focus on for our next steps. The traffic data we have shows that roughly three hundred and fifty to four hundred heavy trucks travel this corridor each day. Representing about five to six percent of total east west traffic. As we look at possible approaches to reducing heavy traffic downtown, I think it's worth pausing on the broader question. Of why might council wish to limit heavy truck traffic downtown in the first place? Concerns we've heard can include pedestrian safety. And the perceived risk of people crossing 50th Avenue as well as potential issues with noise, exhaust and sight lines. There are considerations like impacts on heritage buildings and how heavy truck traffic aligns with the city's vision for downtown overall. It's worth noting that public perspectives on this issue vary, which is why discussion at this stage is certainly recommended. Help guide our conversation, administration has identified four potential topic areas that could shape the scope of a future report. First topic focuses on focuses on community perspectives and engagement. This is gathering input from residents, businesses and road users to better understand the scale of the concern. Confirm their issues with heavy truck traffic downtown, engage public sentiment before investing significant effort. On the city's part in developing further solutions. Second topic for council's discussion tonight. Could look at through traffic disincentives. These are steps that make the downtown route less attractive to heavy truck traffic without imposing outright restrictions. This may include things like raised crosswalks, speed adjustments, or more visible commercial vehicle enforcement. A third topic includes regulatory options. This could look at limiting truck access based on weight or number or number of axes. Or a portion of 50th Avenue could be removed from the city's designated hall routes, which is a relatively straightforward adjustment. Then finally, the fourth topic we could consider is encouraging greater use of the Thirty Fourth Street bypass. Whether through improved signage, targeted communication with the trucking industry. Or physical improvements that make the bypass more attractive. So as you move into discussion tonight, there are a few key questions that we'd encourage council to consider. Why might council wish to limit heavy truck traffic downtown? Should administration explore engagement with residents, businesses and road users to better understand root concerns? Should we examine the cost and feasibility of gateway or traffic calming features? Could we return with options for strengthening commercial vehicle enforcement? Should we examine potential bylaw changes to restrict trucks by weight or axle count? While council has in the past expressed reservations about bylaw, the bylaw department enforcing moving violations. The city does retain the ability to enforce provisions such as designated heavy truck routes. Should this be revisited? Should administration examine strategies to improve signage, communication or infrastructure to promote use of the Thirty Fourth Street bypass? Be listening closely and look forward to the discussion.
Thanks, Director Thompson. Pastor Ross.
Thank you, Mayor Creasy. My question is to direct to Pichet. Obviously, there is at most, if not all municipalities, there is the engine retarder brake signs. And as going into the community, we have a downward slope at the golf course, which obviously then. Myself as driving truck, that activates your retarder brake when it's on, which. I'm assuming we have bylaws and I've asked Director Peshad asked the question to LPS. Has there ever been a retarder brake ticket issued to any truckers? Because if so, that would reduce some of the noise complaints that. Significantly that way, as whereas different trucks have different levels of. Decibels, I guess I could say.
Through to Councilor Ross, through Mayor Creasy, thank you so much. Unfortunately, they did not get back to me as of yet, so I seriously don't have an answer for you. I do know in our own bylaw enforcement services, we have not issued any retard retarder brake tap traffic tickets at all.
Councilor Hibbs.
Thank you, Mayor Creasy. I just wanted to add a few things to why considering heavy traffic. I think. That possibly congestion wasn't really highlighted as a bullet point here, and I think it should be. Alternative, as well as, and I think I may have omitted this in my original presentation to council as to why we should be discussing this at all. Would be dangerous goods. And I don't know the official, you know, definition of what that is. And I don't also know what provisions we already have in place for that. But we do know that we have some very interesting materials being traveled through the heart of La Combe. High risk and my my goal is just to keep downtown safer, quieter, less congested. So that it's just passenger traffic or vehicles that are destined to make deliveries. So I really would like those two points to be added to the things that we're considering here. Additionally, I just want to make comment on the five to six percent of truck traffic, sorry, vehicle traffic. Is what makes up is what trucks make up. True, maybe that that might be the case. I'll take your word for it. But a truck is certainly not equal to a passenger vehicle. They're worth many more if you're talking about length and the space that they take up. So I think that that's just worth mentioning and considering. And then I also just want to comment on a few, I guess, assumptions that are being made in this report. For example, the the topic about bylaw enforcing these. I hope that the intention was to raise awareness that bylaw could could also enforce this. But understanding that the police definitely could enforce any rule changes that we make. I guess I was wanting a little bit more clarity on how easy it would be. How onerous it would be to put in place these rules and I feel like I didn't really get that from this report. Another assumption that I'm a little bit disappointed with is, you know, the suitability of the Thirty Fourth Street overpass. Just because I'm a geek that way, I've gone up there and I've observed. The traffic flow because I want to see just how difficult it is for semi traffic to be using it. B trains, like all the traffic that's already on there, there is significant. Traffic that's using it, not nowhere near what's going through town, but it is being used. And I saw no evidence of any issue navigating that intersection. We had talk of. Trucks being able to back up down a alley in a busy downtown street recently. And and being suggested that that would be easy for a professional driver. And yet the comments earlier were made that that intersection would be far too problematic for. For truckers to be able to use effectively and that we would need to make changes. So I mean, I guess I'm not a traffic engineer and I'm certainly not a class one driver. But from my anecdotal observations, I just feel like that's an assumption that I don't really think is a hundred percent accurate. And then finally, I guess what I would have liked to have seen added to this report is. The maps that I was mentioning earlier about, you know, dangerous goods. What what roads are allowed to have traffic on them? I'm assuming interior roads are only allowed to have heavy traffic on them if they're making local deliveries as opposed to just traveling through. But in my, in my opinion, I think that we could easily avoid any east west travel of heavy trucks. Like from like period unless they're making deliveries in town and quite easily by using the Thirty Fourth Street. And again, I would have liked to have seen a map that displays that. So I a little bit difficult now, we're already in the meeting, but yeah, I don't know if administration has any thoughts or feedback on that.
CEO Gotti.
So we don't have the maps, but we were responding to the related prior motion, which was. Scheduling a committee meeting for identifying and discussing some topics to be addressed in the future report. So there isn't the intent of a future report. We understood this meeting to be about scoping what would be in that future report, which the maps can absolutely be a component and.
Council Dallas.
Thank you, Mayor Creasy. Yeah, I. I think this is purchase. Yeah, a good feel it out point here. And as a, as I was preparing for this, when I got the agenda, I realized that. I could have done a better job and maybe. Two weeks ago, I could have supplied some additional questions to you, and so I I'm grateful that we will have a report coming. And I think I think we will get some great information in that. Based on these these topics that have been presented, I feel like. It is going to have to be a mixture of everything and there are. There are small pieces from each one of them that actually that I quite like and I see benefits to them. And I feel that they can be used to improve the community and I think that'll I have. Providing you a direction of which one to go through, I'm going to have to maybe just be a little more selective in which one I'm choosing here. Because I I'm not really super keen on picking one over the others versus adding additional pieces. Some of the questions that I had that. I don't expect to be answered here tonight, and I know some of these answers you guys will have, and that's fine. The one was, how many years away are we from anticipating the need for the South Ring Road? And my belief was we were. Anticipating that as a twenty five to fifty year project for the future. And that's correct and road usage at that time. Would reducing the commercial industrial traffic allow us to make improvements at the highway twelve and two A? Intersection and train crossing sooner and could they have longer lasting impact based on traffic volumes? I know we cannot do whistle cessation as the current intersection stands. I'm curious if diverting heavy, large traffic will make that an easier situation to solve in the future. Or if that is just going to remain a plague, no matter which vehicles are driving through it. And the amount of room we have available to us. Counselor Hibbs touched on it on the, if we could have investigation on to the use of trucks and. Equipment doing the Thirty Fourth Street. I wasn't at the east end of Thirty Fourth Street. I was on the north one that goes on to two A. And again, I saw. Tractor trailers and two trailer trucks using that since so I'm like, okay. They're not shying away from this, so they are using that, but I don't know what it's like on the other end. And then, yeah, I would definitely like to see us consulting with businesses. Up and down that street and not just the businesses, but I think also residents would be would be great. And then my other concerns were, and this, I guess, maybe doesn't impact them as much, but trucks and businesses that operate along the train tracks. That have loading and unloading. And I'm not sure what products are coming on and off those trucks and those trains there. But I understand that maybe that's seasonal, maybe it's year round. But I think that would be important information to have too is those direct loading from the train tracks of going directly onto tractor trailers as well. So. While other people speak, I'm happy to piece together my ones from the topics that would be interested in, so thank you.
Counselor Ross.
Thank you, Mayor Creasy. I'd also kind of for information, hopefully in the future. Anyways. What bylaws are in place that all the respect are not being enforced? How could we expand the scope of our current bylaws going for by law members going forward? Hopefully, one day we'll become more. Staff that or future staff members be now trained. I know obviously there's been DOT check stops just to the west of Fifty Eighth Street. Yes, one question I'd like to know if DOT, if we requested more DOT check stops. Is that possible with the collaboration of LPS and bylaw? Because they have far more training at doing specific vehicle checks. I think as a demographics that they know there's going to be more levels of enforcement, that would be a deterrent. So same with, you know, that maybe they will choose alternate routes. Knowing that we are more proactive to the enforcement of our own bylaws and DOT inspections. So if you increase the frequency of enforcement. I think that creates awareness upon a specific demographics that. You know, because we you're trapped. If you come over the hill, it's not like people don't get on their cell phones and. Radios and so forth to warn us, but you come over the hill there, but it just, I think there's areas of. Opportunity to increase enforcement. I think there's areas that are not being enforced, so. Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Koenig.
I think you may increase. Yeah, I would echo a lot of the comments that are made here tonight by Council Dallas and. Counselor Ross, I think there's bits and pieces you can take from each topic that would. Work here, yeah, broader engagement with residents, businesses, road users. I've heard complaints about the train and the vibration that it does to the. Older buildings. I believe there's some correlation with the truck traffic too, but I'd like to see that a little more. Through traffic dissent incentives, yeah, I mean. Speed limit is pretty good there already thirty, maybe one raised crosswalk. Maybe that will help. I think there's a smattering of things here that could. I agree with Counselor Ross. I mean, I hear guys with their Jakes coming through town all the time. I mean, pretty sure they're not allowed to do that, but we're. We're not enforcing that. I don't know who's responsible. It's by law for police for going after guys with their Jakes on. But those Jake breaks don't need to be, I mean, coming down from the golf course, they don't even need to be on there. It's such, you know, anyways, I it kind of bothers me having driven truck before. There's, there's lots, there's no reason to. Drive with your Jake break on through downtown. It's silly. And then the Thirty Fourth Street bypass, I would agree that I. I don't think there need to be any physical improvements there. Guys can make that corner. I've seen it myself as well. But yeah, better promotion of that bypass can that can that help as well? I think there's a smattering of things that can be done here and should be looked at. I think invariably at the end of the day, I think you'll still have trucks come through downtown, but even if we can. And I think with this, the new ball out and stuff, I me personally, I think that's already helping. But if there's a little bit more we can do, why not? But I don't think you can cut it out altogether. I think you just need to make it. You know, a little more onerous so that a trucker may say, well, heck with this, I'll just. Go differently to get to the east part of town or to the east country or the west country, so. Oh, thank you.
Counselor Galloksen.
Thank you, Mayor Creasy. I was going to say the same thing. I've heard about the trains causing vibration and not the truck traffic. So I would be curious to know if there is anything from that, so I had the same information. I assume highway twelve is a dangerous goods route. It's allowed. Yeah, so that would be some change we could make to force those vehicles around the Thirty Fourth Street. Bypass if we change that. And I think that would be a good first start with this. I would love to see no truck track traffic downtown, but I don't know if that's realistic or not. But I I would like to see dangerous goods go around the city. So I hope that can be done and through the promotion of that Thirty Fourth Street bypass. Thank you.
Thank you. For me as well, the dangerous goods road designation. To circumvent the city. That would be wonderful. The rest of it, I have a bit of a problem with. I'd like to have a better understanding of who exactly these trucks are. If it's, if it's members of the immediate area agriculture community. I think it's expecting a little much for them not to use the roads we. He are more than happy to welcome there to spend money at our, at our stores and facilities in the city. And then to say that they can't use the the highway as a thoroughfare for hauling their products and whatnot, I don't think is realistic. We've done a terrific job in making the narrowest portion of highway twelve that I'm aware of anywhere on it. And already made it extremely inconvenient for truckers by default. So I'm not necessarily sure what we need to do other than wait for time because. I think they will be avoiding La Combe. At a far greater rate than what we realize just for convenience value alone. And I would like to give that some opportunity to. Be realized over a few years to see if that's kind of because I think it is going to have an impact for sure. Counselor Koenig.
Thank you, Mayor Creasy. I was just thinking as you were speaking there about an example that I saw the other day. Vision truck lines, we know what vision truck lines is in between Black Falls and La Combe. And I saw a couple of guys said north on two A. And then turn left on the twelve through downtown and I'm thinking. Couple of things. First, they made a difficult left hand turn coming out of the yard onto two A. And then like, why not? I get it. It would add about ten minutes. Why not go right onto two A? I mean, you can make the argument, then they're going through Black Falls, but. Go through Black Falls, take five ninety seven, get on the two and come back that way and then go into twelve. Heading, I think, yeah, I think it was an education piece, you know, that just struck me that those guys making even that corner. As they turn left on to twelve. With with those super bees, they can make that corner, but it's. It's, yeah, I don't know. I just, I caught myself wondering, why are you going this way, fellas? Why not go? Again, I guess it adds ten minutes. I get it, but I think there's examples out there where that education piece might be like. Hey, fellas. Why not take this route? I get it. They're going to do what they want to do, but yeah, I think there's things we can do, maybe.
Anyone else? I'm not seeing. Any additional input here? Just wanted to verify with administration. Whether you've earned enough information. Be able to put together. Some information helpful to council. And if there's an expectation. Of time costs involved, that type of thing. CEO Gotti.
Yeah, I think we have a, I think we have some good direction here. We're looking for the inclusion of a few more factors. That can be considered like benefits of restricting truck traffic, that being congestion. Safer, less busy downtown, removal of the dangerous goods route. Designation on highway twelve, there seemed to be quite a bit of support for that. Some public consultations specifically targeting businesses and residents. That are impacted by truck traffic or changes. Spoke about direct loading from rail tracks to like confirm if that's happening. If so, what's the, what's the impact there? Would the removal of truck traffic open up options for the two A twelve intersection that wouldn't otherwise be available if they're included? I heard that question. You see, I'm clear on maps of the existing dangerous good routes and I'm assuming. Maps showing where they would go if those routes were changed as well. We'll look at that deeper community engagement perspective, again, focusing on. Those impacted. I did not hear a lot of support for exploration of like gateway features or significant inclusion of raised crosswalks. But more of like a. We've made some changes and would like to see how those play out and possibly consider more. Lot of changes that would come through. We would like to know what bylaw changes would be required to facilitate this reduction or remove truck traffic. As well as any change man, changes to our enforcement authorities and just confirmation that there is someone. Enforcing it seems to be a desire to have this air brake retarder brake issue enforced. Seems pretty well supported. I think there is still this question we do hear. I believe like you that that's totally navigatable by trucks that Thirty Fourth Street bypass. We could do a quick little modeling through the traffic turn, so just to confirm that, to put that to rest entirely. And that was what I had. From tonight's discussion, if there's something that I've missed from your comments or. Sir Koenig or Dallas or Collex. Please let me know.
Do you have any, just just to be sure of what you said with respect to raised crosswalks? Was that a non-issue or something that we're going to be pursuing?
I didn't see widespread. Support for exploring that idea at this time. I didn't see widespread support for exploring that idea at this time, but I'm open to, of course.
Very good. Yeah, that would be a, a problem for me, but if there's not a lot of interest in it, then that's fine. Counselor Galloksen, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Creasy. That's basically a speed bump is what it is, turns into. That's what I've seen around the world. Anyway, that map you had up, was that just truck routes, not dangerous goods? That was dangerous goods all through La Combe? Okay. Interesting. All right. Thanks.
Counselor Hibs.
Thank you, Mayor Creasy. I just wanted to say thank you for the really good conversation that we had tonight. This was something that was kind of important to me. I had promised to bring this forward and, and so I did. And I really do appreciate all of the input. And I feel like administration has something good to go on. That other map that was shown just with highlighter pen, I do appreciate that you did flash that up. That, that actually is mine. But I wanted to be able to demonstrate that east-west traffic could be rerouted around. And I just want to reiterate that in, I'm in no way suggesting that local trucking companies be affected by this. I think that they should be exempt because they are either in the area or delivering to the area. And, and that is definitely not my intention. And that is exactly why I wanted to have this as a conversation and not just as a, let's do something. Definitely support lots of consultation, because of course, that voice matters. We don't want to hamstring local industry. That would be ridiculous. So anyway, I do really appreciate the, the interaction, the conversation tonight.
And so just to be sure, do, do we have a way to distinguish for the truck, truck traffic, which is transport type and local? Director Pichet.
At this point, our bylaw enforcement wouldn't have any, aside from registration, when they run the plates. That would probably be the only way that they could determine if the, the truck is registered within a local business at this time.
Thank you. Director Thompson.
I think it's, it's an important point to highlight, especially in free, as you pursue and look at things like bylaw amendments or other avenues that there are municipalities that use things like weight and number of axles as an enforcement mechanism. That vehicles are over a certain weight or over a certain number of axles are not allowed on this route or only allowed on that route. It's very, very difficult to understand where they're going. Possible that there is some way to do that, but that if there is a desire to distinguish between, as I'm hearing tonight, between local traffic being allowed to travel these routes, but through traffic not being allowed to travel these routes, then we're almost not looking at anything weight-based or anything axle-based at all. We're looking at something different. And so it just helps separate in our minds what we're focusing on. It's not truck traffic explicitly. It's through traffic and how we can reduce those numbers through bylaw enforcement mechanisms. Look into it and bring forward best ideas in the report.
Counselor Ross.
Thank you, Mayor Creasy. I think it would be incredibly difficult for council to expect administration and staff to distinguish between local, not local. And then all due respect to weights and axle weights. Your weight per axle or the number of axles required by weight, it's irrelevant if you have a triax or a double axle. That amount of weight per axle is going to be consistent. Like it's, it's per axle. Like whether you have a 10 triaxle or tanamax or B-train or 53 foot, it's bottom line is weight per axle. That's just more tires. So you really, your weight per tire or axle is kind of, that's a very gray area. I, I wouldn't wish that upon any LPS or bylaw member to be, you know, it's, you gotta have a black and white of, you know, do we not want to allow dangerous goods? That's black and white, you know, or retarder brakes? I'm sorry, but member can sit in the golf course there and grab them. That's black and white. That's no enforcement because, you know, businesses, residents, that they obviously have expressed lack of enforcement. And we really need to, many areas going forward, all due respect. I so hope you get more significantly staffed for that, you know, to help out. And of different areas, but I'm just saying there's, there's opportunities for enforcement. There's no can request more more cooperation with DOTs for inspections, that there's deterrence for people to go through. So, but I think I wouldn't want gray areas for, that's just, it's very, very difficult. Thank you.
Counselor Dallas.
Thank you, Mayor Creasy. I guess just to add it in here, one of my considerations was, is we, we wanted to make this difficult for, for outside agencies. There is the option to create toll road. Inter-agency or inter-community vehicles can still require permits, but they get the exception. And it's either no cost or reduced cost. And then outside the area would have to pay a toll to drive through and use that road. I don't know how you enforce that when the only picture is of a license plate of a trailer, but I think I, you know, I'm not super interested in that. I think we have some other better ideas, but if we find there is no other options, then that's another one that's worth considering. But I do like traffic calming and, and just other ways to actively encourage them to go another direction. So, thank you.
Does anyone have any new items to bring forward? If not, I think that, is there one item on the agenda? Counselor Dallas.
Thank you, Mayor Creasy. I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All those in favor? I don't know if it's on there or not. It is. I didn't mention at the start, Counselor Hookstriss sends your regrets. Looks like Counselor Koenig wants to stay a little longer, but by a margin of, margin of five to one, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.